I don't remember, try again.
Commissioner Borum, can you hear us?
Yes, sir.
Right. Commissioner Campbell, can you hear us? Daniel, when you're, while you're up, do you mind closing that door?
Yeah, there's the door.
You want?
Do you want me to start the process again at the beginning of the meeting and then do you push the cameras log in?
Madam Mayor, would you, is that your preference, we're starting to do that?
Because I don't want any, you know, the pastor Norbury, that's other things except. Special Call Workshop, notice.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're hereby notified that the Special Call Workshop is scheduled for February 16, 2023, at 8:30 a.m. It's hereby rescheduled for February 16, 2023, at 11 a.m. at City Hall, through One More Second Street, plus 43177. And February 17, 2023, at 8:30 a.m. at City Hall, through One More Second Street, plus 43177. The purpose of the workshop is to interview candidates for the city manager. The agenda outline is anticipated to be, but may be scheduled, subject to change, February 16, from 11 to 12, Interview 1. February 17, 8:30 to 9:30, Interview 2. 9:30 to 10:45, Interview 3. 11 to 12, Interview 4. And to Pastor Norbury, if you'd please.
Give a little bit, thank you once again for this day. Give you praise and glory for all that you, all that you've done. Prayer that you would bless is meaningful and together to visit the city. Yes, God, that you would look on these candidates. That you know what is the effect of the city and who it is. Pray, God, for the wisdom, for the insight, for whatever needs to be done in all instances. Pray, God, that you would have the way to continue this, bless the words of our hands. Give you praise for all that you do, in Jesus' name, amen.
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 Commissioner. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of.
Or this thing.
One nation.
One nation. I'm the God.
With the party injective.
Yes, for all.
Thank you. Commissioner Tammy McPassell here. Commissioner Justin Campbell. We understand he's logging in. Commissioner Will Young.
Present.
Commissioner Rufus Borum.
Present.
Mayor Correa, present. We do have a forum in the chambers, Madam Mayor. At this point, do you want to wait briefly to see if Commissioner Campbell log on?
Yes, ma'am, if you don't mind, I'd prefer that everyone hear what I'm about to say. Are you in text communication with Commissioner Campbell saying?
Yeah, he's, I want the link again, I'll send him the link again.
Entry time might be. Did you get a response, Sam?
He said he doesn't have the link, which isn't.
Excuse me?
He advised he still has doesn't can email with the link, which I don't understand.
Okay, so in the interest of proptness, Madam Mayor, could please issue that I'll move forward?
Please go.
Okay. So, as you know, we have an applicant, one applicant scheduled for interview today. We have two remaining applicants scheduled for interviews tomorrow. We had another applicant withdraw this morning. So, we'll move forward with this process, which I think we all contemplated would be a screening process for you to determine whether or not there are any or all applicants that you wish to bring in for in-person interviews. I would like to just discuss, Ms. Thomas, I assume is on the Zoom link. We would like to discuss with you what we think are the procedures that we should follow in conducting the interview. First of all, I think we've all agreed that we would ask all of the candidates the same questions. And I assume that y'all are going to rotate the asking of the questions among yourselves. If, in the course of those, that question and answer process, a topic arises that seems to merit additional inquiry, then obviously, that, that will be something that we will move forward with. If it relates to something fairly generic or general in nature. At the end of the questioning session, I am going to ask each of the candidates if they would agree to consent to an in-depth background check. We did not attempt to do an in-depth background check of everyone who had applied. But if we're reaching the point now where you might be selecting someone, obviously, given the importance of the job and so forth, we believe that an in-depth background check would be appropriate. If the person, the applicant refuses to consent to an in-depth background check, then I would assume that would be a factor that would all weigh fairly heavily in deciding whether to continue forward with that person as a candidate. After we have, have we had the question and answer about the background check, it would be my intent to ask each candidate if there's anything in their background or in their work history that they would like to disclose that might be revealed by a background check that the commission, one or more commissioners might feel ways in on their qualifications or fitness to serve, and give them a chance to explain. At the end of that, if, if each, if any applicant will reveal something, then I would assume that would be fair game for us to inquire into. If they do agree to a background check, we will do a background check that is as in-depth as we can obtain with complete with inquiries of their current employers, most recent employers, verification of their educational statements and credentials, things of that nature that, you know, that we didn't feel comfortable in doing without their permission. And with their specific permission, we'll probably also ask for a social security number to be provided to us in a private format, not, not broadcast here, so that we can make sure we cover those bases too. Is that satisfactory to everybody?
Yes. Madam Mayor, if I may, Commissioner Campbell is on Zoom.
Hopefully, he heard some of that conversation. Ms. Thomas, do you want to add anything to it?
Okay, finally. A good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, everyone. What the, we have, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, perfect. Okay. Manager, Mrs. Jones and I have discussed this. And we have also included a question on your package, number 11, where you can ask about, is there any materials, if we did a online search, was there anything that may, that you would like to disclose to us? Okay, so that, that information can also be captured at that point, and we've included a question. Okay?
Here, give them a. Give them a. Okay, so is everyone? I will then turn, I will then remain silent unless you have a question.
May I? Stay right on the top, we have a minute. I'm sorry, may I admit him now? Welcome, Mr. Bell.
Thank you very much.
Your interest in sitting in your job in Palaka position. We are going to start with you. We have several questions, and we're going to each take a turn at those. Then we'll get into more depth after that. Commissioner Campbell, we will start with you with the first question. Do you get him?
I think I can hear.
Okay, could you please start us off with the first question, Commissioner Bell? Madam Mayor, it was Mr. Bell saying to hear you. Okay.
I am here, Mayor, if you would allow the other Commissioners to do so. I'm just in listening mode at this time.
Okay. Good morning, Mr. Bell, and thank you for your interest in a position as city manager here in Palaka. I am Commissioner McAskill. Can you hear me, Mr. Bell?
Thank you. It's a little bit muffled, but I think I can hear.
Okay. Thank you for your interest here in the city manager position here in the city of Palaka. I am Commissioner McAskill, and I would, I would heart the question in progress, they're going to be progressing to the first question, okay?
Pleasure to meet you.
Thank you. Where do you see yourself in the next five years as well as the next 10 years?
Well, I would be hopeful that if I was selected as the city manager there in Palaka, that I would be there for the next 10 years. I have kids that are currently, as you probably know from my resume and from the information that I provided before, I have a daughter who's 15 and two boys that are 10 and eight. And I am hopeful that I would be able to be in that location until they are finished with high school and off to college at one of the reputable universities in South Florida or in Northern Florida. Preferably, my preference would be South Florida, but that's okay.
Have you had an opportunity to research our local high schools, middle schools here, or look at our local county district?
Yes, I have, and there are a number of schools that are available. And as you probably know, I have an education background. So I'm very interested in the A-rated schools that are available. Primarily, I mean, I am a product of a public school system, specifically a magnet program in a public school system. And so I would, that would be my preference. And so I am hopeful that we can find the appropriate educational opportunities for my kids, both my boys and my daughter. And the. Yes, I'm sorry, say that again? Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, well, good morning, Mr. Bell, and again, thank you for your candidacy. Seeking city manager position here in the city of Palaka. And Commissioner Rufus Borum. And the second question is, where did you see Palaka in five years and 10 years? And then I will have a follow-up question as to, can you give me a little bit more information around, what do you know about?
Okay, so looking at my background, I've, I've worked in more affluent communities and I've worked in communities that had limited resources. I am proud to say that I started my career in South Florida with Miami-Dade Water and Sewer. And then I progressed to the South Florida Water Management District. And I think actually one of our directors ended up at St. John's River. I had the benefit of working as an assistant in the city of, city of Beverly Hills, California, as well as working as a city manager in Muskegon, Michigan. So I've had the broad range of, of communities that I have served and worked for. I would say consistent across the board, the, the one important factor is, and it was even more important in the community that I, that I just recently served in, is having a belief and faith in the value and opportunity of the community. And I, as I look at the city of Palaka, I see tremendous potential, tremendous opportunity. I see the future in Palaka. The five, in the next five years, I believe that Palaka would be the community that everybody wants to be in. So growth management, the management of how you approach that in the next five years is critical. In the next 10 years, I believe that you can leverage those advantages over the next five years to make sure that when you hit 10 years, that you're providing all the services that the communities is looking for in the, in the community. All the services that the government offers should be focused on providing for the needs and desires of the community. So I see, not to be repetitive, but I see tremendous opportunity and potential in the community. And I think the key is the faith that the U.S. Commissioners have in Palaka, but also extending that faith in the potential and the opportunity to the rest of the community. The biggest cheerleaders are the city manager and the administration. The biggest cheerleaders are the, the commission and the board. And I think if you have that, then the rest of the community will follow suit. And it's just a matter of obtaining that opportunity in the next 10 years.
All right, and the other piece to that question was, what do you know about Palaka?
So I've done a tremendous amount of research. I understand that there are some challenges there. For instance, the historic districts in the downtown area, very similar to the community that I've served, the desire and interest in developing the historic districts in the downtown area. I think it's important that we have to, as a, as a organization, as a city organization, be prepared to serve the most vulnerable in our community. That's seniors, that's children, that's single parents. Attainable housing is going to be the issue that every community across the country has to wrestle with. And I don't think Palaka is any difference in that, indifferent in that. And so I don't like to use the term affordable housing. I like to use the term attainable housing because affordable has a, has a different connotation that I think we want to stay away from. But I think that that is an issue that we have to wrestle with to make sure that as the city grows, that we also make sure that we grow with attainable housing. My background, as you probably saw, is in diversity, equity, inclusion. I have done training across the country with various police departments as a former police officer myself that allows me to be able to enter that space and have conversations in that space with, with the departments and the communities associated with it. I like to use the term idea instead of diversity, equity, inclusion. Idea meaning, you're talking about inclusion, you're talking about diversity, equity, but also access. And so access to me is, is some, is an area that we often forget about with regard to those that are otherwise able. So people with, that are commonly referred to as disabled. I like to use the term otherwise able, but that is a part of access that I think that we need to, as we. But that is a part of access that I think that we need to, as we grow, make sure that we account for the diversity across the whole ideascape. Did you want me to stop there? Can I? I, I think you've got sixty-two million dollars worth of projects on the streets. I'm excited about the airport. That's one area of my background that I've only brushed up against. And so I'm excited about the potential of having that as part of the portfolio, things that I'm responsible for. The alignment of your plans, leadership academies are critically important. You've already got that in the area, so I see that as a potential. I would love to be part of the Blue Crab Festival. So that's another thing that I'm looking forward to, have selected. So I could go on and on about the research and background that I have, but I'll stop there.
Yes, Commissioner Campbell has his hand raised. Okay, does he want to take my question number three?
I will take on question number three, but I want to ask the commission, as you speak, if you could speak directly into the mic, it is kind of hard to hear you via the Zoom platform. So if you could, just speak directly into the mic. Question number three, Mr. Bell, thank you so much for your interest in the city manager position with the city of Palacca. I'm Commissioner Campbell. Question three is, what is your experience in dealing with the media? Example, television, newspaper, radio, internet. Also, do you view the media as a positive force? If so, how?
Okay, so as I commented on, I touched on it just a little bit before. My experience has been in communities that have been highly resourced and those communities that aren't. What drew me to my current assignment, among other things, was the opportunity to personally experience working in and developing the economic development of communities that have limited resources. I could talk about it in theory. My PhD is associated with it, and so a lot of the theoretical aspects of that are important there. But in terms of personal experience, all of my personal experience has been in communities that have been highly resourced. Coming to the community that I'm, that I just recently served, I, as a city manager, was responsible for the full breadth of the organization, which meant that I was responsible for interacting with the media. We did not have a public information officer, and I think that is something, if we have an opportunity to talk about in the future, is critically important to the success and, and/or failure of an organization. But in my, my role as city manager, I interacted directly on a regular basis with the media. And so when you interact with the media, as I'm sure you know, I'm not telling you anything that you don't, there's earned and unearned media. And so we have to be prepared to leverage the unearned media, which is the free media that we don't have to pay for, as well as the earned media that we do have to pay for. But the point is that it is important for us as a, as a community and server, public servants, to be able to get the word out to the community. So whether that is the news media, the newspaper, which is becoming increasingly relevant and shifting towards social media, we have to make sure that we control the narrative, that we speak to the narrative, and that we make sure that our residents are informed. As I look across the country in my repertoire, my background, there are two aspects that, that commonly exist in every community, and that's formal communications and informal communications. And we need to be prepared to leverage both of those. What I've discovered is that when formal communications break down, breaks, breakdown, most communities informal kicks in, or vice versa. Ideally, you want to have both formal and informal. Social media allows you to control the narrative in that informal media. And if we don't leverage that, then we're missing it. One of the things that I brought to the community, based on my experience and education as a school superintendent, was the ability to leverage a program called Blooms, which allows us to, within education, to speak to each teacher in each classroom, each principal, and the parents of each child that we serve. I have spoken with companies like that and looked at beta versions that will allow us to expand that to an entire community, where we can speak directly to each household in the community. Being able to speak to them and leverage that communications element and be able to control that narrative so they have valid, informed information is important to the success and failure of our, of our community. I think I answered one part. I don't think I touched on the last part, so if you could repeat that, I'd appreciate it.
Yes, sir. The last part of that question was, do you view the media as a positive force? If so, how?
Okay, and yes, I do view the media as a positive force. They can have negative aspects. And unfortunately, in today's dating age, you have people in the media who are concerned and fixated on the idea of getting their name on a byline and getting that report published. And so that's more important. What bleeds sells, unfortunately, is, is a reality that we have to deal with. But what I've also found is, if you can work with the media, you have the opportunity to share information that is important to the community. And if you can work with them collaboratively, then that gives them an opportunity to provide more information, which gives them more options for more stories. Getting to that point sometimes is difficult, but that's what I've been able to do in my, in my current role, is get the members of the media to understand, there is a wealth of information that I can share. And if you work with me with positive stories about the community, then I can give you more. Too often, it, those people in the media want to report the negative because that sells. But that doesn't always sell if you've got a plethora of information to provide. And so long-term, I believe media is a positive force. If you can leverage collaboration with them and use that, that opportunity to get the word out to the public, then I think it can be positive.
Thank you. I'm Roddy Cabrera. I am the mayor, and thank you again for applying for this position.
Yes, ma'am.
To the next question, talk about the most controversial issue that you encountered as a manager administrator. How would, would, how was it resolved, excuse me?
This is true. So if you don't mind, I'm gonna name two issues, a short issue and a longer issue. One of the most controversial issues that I encountered early on in my career, in my current role, was a question of ethics. And so approximately three months after I took the position, I was offered what some would consider the dream position to, to work in the state of California for manager as a deputy manager in a community of a hundred thousand plus, with a salary that would have been three times what I was being compensated with before. My commitment, however, was to the community that I was at. The ICMA ethics require that you, if you commit to community, that you commit to a minimum of two years. So although this might have been inviting, and I had the opportunity to leave the community that, that I was in, to me, whenever ethics intersect with politics and opportunity, ethics always has to trump. And so in that situation, I chose to go the ethical route, stay in the community that I was in, because I was committed to that community and the success of that community. My father, who was a retired officer, graduated from Florida A&amp;M University, met my mom there. One of the things that he said is, the choice that you made was an honorable choice. I don't know if it was the right choice or the wrong choice, but it was the ethical choice, and that's the choice that I went through, went with. Now, in terms of controversy within the community, the implementation of the vacant building ordinance was probably one of the more controversial aspects of, of my job in the community that I served. That, that ordinance existed since 2009, had not been enforced when I arrived in 2019. It provided that any holder of a residential commercial property, if that property was vacant, they had to register it. Each year that it was vacant, and each year that they registered it, there was a fee associated with it. And that fee escalated every year that the property remained vacant. In the, in the ten years prior to me coming to the community, we had only received or, or enforced five hundred dollars of total over that ten-year period. And there were numerous vacant structures in the community. So I brought this to my council and said, you know, there's an ordinance here that allows us to address blight, changed behavior, and also develop a revenue source at the same time. And my council said, move forward in enforcing it. It was controversial because I moved forward in enforcing it. There were a number of, of members of the community that were not happy with receiving a bill in the mail that said that because they held a vacant property, that there was a cost associated with it. It was my responsibility ethically as a city manager to move forward in enforcing that ordinance, unless it was decided by the commissioner or council in this case, that they wanted to nullify that ordinance. That did not make a lot of people happy. And so that was one of the issues that I had to wrestle with throughout my administration. And ultimately, I believe it made the community much better as a result of changing behavior. And that's really the focus of that ordinance, to change behavior, to encourage people to make gainful usage of those properties instead of leaving them blank, empty, and blighted.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Bell. My name is Commissioner Will Jones. And the fifth question is, how do you build commission consensus on a split commission? How do you build commission consensus on a split commission?
Okay, if you could repeat that directly into the mic, because I think I heard bits and pieces of it.
How do you build commission consensus on a split commission?
Okay, well, I, I think the first thing that, that is important to understand and realize is that a manager is responsible for making sure that a commission is informed. And that's where some of my fellow managers may fall short. They may look at an issue and take a particular preference in a direction and neglect to provide all the pros and cons of all the options that are available to a commission. And I believe that it is a manager's responsibility to look at the pros and cons of every aspect. I think one of the advantages that I bring to the equation as a manager, is my background and broad range of experience. I can anticipate, in many cases, before issues are dealt with, the pros and cons associated with those, those options. Now, once the commission is fully educated on the pros and cons of all the aspects of it, if the commission is still divided in that regard, I believe it is important for the manager to follow through with one-on-one conversations with each commission member to make sure that all commission members are fully informed with every conversation across the board. And ultimately, to work towards a consensus. Perhaps one segment of the commission is interested in moving in direction A, and another segment is interested in moving in section B. If we can find consensus that some movement is, is necessary, then the enemy of, of the, the good should not be perfect. And so if movement is the desire, we have to figure out between A and B which direction we're gonna go. And I would work towards a consensus on what the commission desires, whether it's A or it's B. And ultimately, if we can't come to commission, to a consensus, then that issue has to die where it stands. But be the responsibility of the manager to make sure that we're fully informed across the board and that we work towards some action, if that action is the will of the, of the organization and of the people.
How do you assess the impact of new technology on the operation of, of a city, of a city, of a city?
So I, I believe wholeheartedly in technology. I, I served a period of time with IBM in their state and local government sector, where I was responsible for all complex solutions. And that was anything having to do with hardware, software, and services, the bundle of those three. And so I worked with my previous colleagues in state and local government in developing solutions that would make the work that they do more efficient and more effective. So anything that cities do across the board, counties do across the board. I also had the, was blessed to be able to work with educational institutions as well as medical institutions. I believe that any technology can, can be leveraged to make the job more efficient and more effective on a local level. I would say, not knowing Palacca personally, only the information that I've researched, that there are opportunities to leverage technology in such a way that we can become more efficient and more effective. But I would be a cheerleader from the start to the end of investing in technology, because I think you can provide better, more enhanced, and more effective services to the community when you have good technology. Now, at the end of the day, technology is good, but it's only as good as the information that you put in. And that determines the information that you
Not at, not at this time.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes, I have a question of question number seven. What is your experience with revitalization, specifically historic preservation, CRAs, CLGs, tax abatement, and federal historic tax credits for eligible properties?
So I'm well-versed in all aspects of economic development. I, I serve simultaneously as the executive director of our Downtown Development Authority. And my current assignment for the city that I, that I served as a city manager. And so in that capacity, as well as the capacity of the city manager, we were really focused on how we can encourage economic development. And so all of those resources that you identified are options that are available to us. I, I believe historic preservation is critically important to certain aspects of the community. You don't want to lose focus on your history. And it's very easy to do that if you have an eye on development and improvement. But we have, what we have to understand is that when we pursue historic preservation, that oftentimes that, that impacts the costs associated with moving forward with projects associated with that. There are ways that I've learned that we can preserve history and not go with the historic designation. But I think the ultimate objective is to make sure that we preserve history. With regard to tax credits, we have to understand that tax credits spur growth. It reduces the barrier to entry to corporations and commerce coming in to communities. And so anything that we can do to reduce the barriers to entry are positive. However, we also have to realize that tax, tax credits are associated, they, they are costs. They are a financial aspect of the equate. Where it makes sense, it makes sense, and where it doesn't, it doesn't. And that's something that, as a manager, I am in a position to, to advise the council on what makes sense and when it makes sense. Lytech is another example of that. Tax increment financing is another, another aspect of being able to create development that oftentimes is not leveraged, because people don't understand it. I've done several projects with tax increment financing. And another area that is often underutilized, brownfield development. The creation of a brownfield authority allows you to access funds that are available for brownfield projects. And in a community that is looking to develop economically, that's a vital aspect of, of spurring growth in, in the community. So I, I think I covered every aspect of it, but if I didn't, please let me know.
Okay, Mr. Bell, what is your, let me speak into this. What is your approach to a Okay, Mr. Bill, what is your, um let me speak into this. What is your approach to addressing code enforcement issues?
To addressing what? I'm sorry. Code enforcement issues here. Yes. So uh what you'll find is that um uh. Uh as a former police officer, I'm very vested in rules and regulations and and um the compliance with those rules and regulations. Um code enforcement is an aspect of that. Uh I've seen and and been part of organizations where code enforcement is part of the police department. Um and organizations where code enforcement was a part of the building department. Um it all depends on the community that you're serving, where it makes sense for it to reside. But what you cannot deny is the importance of code enforcement. If you have codes, those codes exist for a reason. And we need to make sure that the community complies with them, or we need to change those codes. Uh compliance only occurs, from my experience, if you enforce them. Um if they're not enforced, then people will ignore them. Um in the communities that 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 I've served, I've always uh supported increasing the number of code enforcement officers. Unless you're in a community where everybody is compliant, then there's, in that community, then there's need for code enforcement. But if you can travel your city and see uh code violations in multiple places that are unaddressed. That is an argument that uh incre- that supports uh adding additional code enforcement officers. I'm happy to see that the city of Placa uh engaged in code enforcement and that you've added additional code enforcement officers. Um part of my analysis, if I were to come there, would say, do we need to add more or is that sufficient? Uh ultimately, I believe the code enforcement should be self-sufficient. So the cost associated with uh with it should also be borne by the cost uh the revenues created by it. Uh it should not be uh an area that has to be subsidized. But to begin with, you know, if it is a priority, then there needs to be that commitment. And that commitment often starts with subsidization, but ends with uh self-sufficiency. So um I I think that that's a good aspect of making sure that your community is consistent and looks good. Uh and uh across the board is compliant with the codes that are set by the the commission.
Mr. Bill.
Yes, sir.
What is your economic development experience, particularly related to small business? Entrepreneurship and various business incubator models?
So um uh with regard to small business um. And the, I believe that small businesses are the foundation of growth. Uh if you look at across our country, it is the middle and small businesses that really generate. Um uh cash flow and also uh uh employment opportunities. They create positions. Uh and and if they can last more than five years, so that that they're sustainable throughout the community. Uh we took a big hit when it came to the coronavirus and uh small businesses. Um were on the brunt of that. And I believe that there's a a lot of funding that is available, at least um. The in the states that I am in and have worked in uh for addressing the need for bringing back small business. Um I found that a great deal of small business operates out of a, out of a living room or a backyard. And bringing those small businesses to uh retail locations is important. But I think we also need to realize that um the way that we do business is changing, uh social media. Um technology is affecting that. And so even if we don't bring small business into retail establishments. We need to be in a position as a city to encourage the development, whether it be through technology or otherwise, of small businesses. Um I think that uh uh my job a- as a downtown development authority director. Has been to transition uh the number of uh small businesses into retail spaces. And so we've done a great deal about that. Um uh and I think that you're gonna see uh a huge growth in that area and that sector. Uh with regard to incubators, that uh we have identified in um a number of our mixed use. Uh growth opportunities, uh space for incubating uh incubator space. Uh maker space for uh small business. And and if you're not familiar with that, you probably are, but just in case. Uh the the maker space provides services that small businesses otherwise are not in a position to offer themselves. And if they offer them, it's at a huge expense. So maker space can reduce that. So I've been in a number of organizations where we've had maker space and that has been a great incubator for small business. Now, the last thing I'll say is about restaurants. We um uh have probably twenty so some odd. Uh folks in in our community where I'm currently serving uh that uh are are great chefs, great cooks. And they're just looking for a place to be able to to set up. So what we uh did is we identified a space that was city-owned. Um and the idea that we had developing that space, it's not fully developed at this point, was that during the day it was gonna be a breakfast restaurant. And in the evenings, Monday, Monday through Sunday, uh a uh particular chef could come in. Utilize that restaurant space for a particular menu to try out their menu and be able to create a following. That's that invisible space between food trucks and brick and mortar. And so we've created an opportunity for people to transition from food trucks to brick and mortar by using that as a, as an incubator space. That's just an example.
Thank you. Uh Mr. Bill, please provide an example of how you handle challenging individuals in the workplace.
Uh so uh uh as an example, um and this is a a difficult example. When I was with the. Uh South uh Florida Water Management District, I I took over responsibility for the Public Works Group. Um specifically, the electronics uh data support acquisition group. And that group had been run um. Uh well, had been operating without a uh direct director for some time when I took it over. When I arrived at the facility there. Um I I was introduced to pickup trucks, shotgun racks, and a number, number of uh rebel flags. Um there were two divisions that operated out of that group. Uh one of them was engineering and the other one was implementation. And the implementation group. Uh the the supervisor of that group and one of their um uh staff meetings evidently. What, which came to me later, uh referred to me using the slur uh McGilla gorilla. And so, once I became aware of that as the director of that group, it was my responsibility to institute discipline. That discipline included two weeks uh um leave. Uh the first week without pay. Um and at the end of the first week, there was supposed to be a hearing. Um that hearing would determine whether it be a second week without pay or a second week with pay. Either way, it was gonna be two weeks. At the time that the uh uh individual came in um between the first week and the second week. Uh his statement to me was, I I'm gonna just retire. I've been here for twenty-three years. Uh I know you're not gonna give me a fair shake after everything that happened, and so it's just best for me to leave. And for me, uh what was difficult is because uh on some levels, I would have been happy if he did leave. Uh just to be completely honest with you. Um however, the institutional knowledge uh to the organization, I was aware of that. And the value of that to the organization, twenty-three years on the job was critically important. And so what I said to him was. It's not important uh what you say about me before you get here, or what you say after you get here, but while you're here. It is your responsibility as a supervisor, because we were command and control, to endure in the uh chain of command. A respect for the chain of command. And if you can do that, that's your job. If you can't do that, then you need to resign. And so this individual came back at the end of that two-week period. And I'm happy to say that we realized that, to me, as a manager. I was, I was more interested in him being able to do his job than whether he liked me or not. But respect for the chain of command was part of his job, and if he could do that, then that's what I was asking for. And he became uh my model employee. He was the best employee that I had for the term that I was there, and I ultimately recommended him for a merit increase. Be- but I think what is important was working through the process of him understanding that what the focus was. Not on his feelings, but the focus was on doing his job. And that's what I ask of all the employees that work with. Me or for me is you, you know, I would like it if you, if if we could have a collaborative relationship where we like each other. But at the end of the day, that what's important to the people of the communities that we serve is that we do our job. And I will say to this day, uh when my birthday comes around on April sixteenth, I get a card from him to this day, even though he's long and retired.
If a public record, if a public record online search is conducted on you. Would there be any information revealed that would be of concern to the city of Palaca? And your possible submissions at City.
Sure. So um I would say this, that uh there are, there is not anything that uh in the search that would disqualify me. For the role that I'm currently in or the role that I aspire to be in. Um however, uh if you, if there was a search that was done, you would find uh a. Uh a great deal of erroneous information that's out there. And I'll, I'll go back to what my uh mother taught me before she passed away. She said that if you are in a boat. Uh the boat is not uh making prog- progress if it's not making waves. And so what I've learned in uh my history as a, as a manager and a public servant is. That anytime you move forward, you're going to find people that are not gonna be happy with progress and with change. Uh you'll find that in one of my previous uh uh um positions. Um that I was terminated, or I should say the position was terminated and therefore I was terminated. And that was because uh I believe I worked my way out of a job because I had done such a good um, good job in that position. You won't see that in the media, but what you will see in my resume and um in my documentation is recommendations. From the council uh where I worked, from the mayor, the mayor pro tem, and from the majority of the council. They are references for me because I had done such a good job despite the fact that a- as a lower-tier employee. I was not in a position to uh dictate what the charter said. And the charter said if the manager makes a decision, that we have to follow that decision. I would never take that away from the manager. That's a uh his right to do that. However, I will say that as an interim manager uh of that community, that I did a a darn good job. Um and that is recognized in uh the references that I have. What I failed to do was make sure that I had a contract that protected me, to allowed me to go back into uh my role and be protected. And that was a mistake that I will never make again. Um in addition to that, you probably find um where I am. Uh currently, that there are gonna be negative reports. Some people will report that uh I was fired from that position. That is not accurate information. I resigned from my position uh in the month of January. In order to protect my severance, in order to uh be able to compete for additional positions throughout the uh. The United States and particularly uh this position there in Placa. So, like I said, in summary. Uh if you're, i- if you are um in a boat and you're making progress, there're gonna be waves and there're gonna be people, be people that aren't happy. But if you really do the research and you delve into it, you'll find that everywhere that I have been, I've done an excellent job. I've done a fantastic job, and that's part of the commitment that I have for my family. Like I said, my parents met at Florida now. Um and they were both public servants. My mom was a special education teacher, and it takes a a special individual to be able to do that. My father was a retired general officer. Public service was the acumen that all of us were destined for. And the attitude that they taught us is, if you see something that needs to be changed. It's your responsibility, if you have the skills and ability to do something, to do something about it. Don't criticize it, don't critique it until you try to fix it and change it. And that's what I've, I've kept as a moniker going forward. Thank you for the question.
Mr. Bill, how would you describe your leadership skills or your leadership style?
Okay. Um so, I I would say that uh I know it sounds cliche, but my. What I've always fashioned my leadership style about has been a servant leadership approach. If you speak to anybody that's worked with me, um and I I may use the word I a lot, but in everything that I do, team. Is important. It is critical to the success of things that I've done. So if you speak to anybody, what you will hear is they, they will talk about collaboration. My leadership style as a servant leader has been, has always been open, engaging, friendly, and calm. Uh even keeled in demeanor. Uh in some of the, the, the worst situations that I've had to work. Where things were constantly changing, uh whether it was a matrix or organization or a hierarchical organization. I I found that approaching it with a calm demeanor uh helped us focus on the solutions associated with the issue. As opposed to focusing on the problem. We can always do an after-action report and deal with the problems afterwards. But when it comes time to dealing with the issues that are at hand, we need somebody that's calm and and creative and innovative. At the helm in order to approach that. And that's what I've tried to do. I've worked for managers in the past. That were so focused on organizational objectives and achieving organizational objectives. They forgot about the importance of the people that were involved in the process. And so, yes, they achieved, we were able to achieve that organizational objective, but turning around and looking in the wake of the uh the path that we've charted. There were all these figuratively dead bodies of people who have been burned out through the process. So as a manager, I've always ascribed to an approach individually. Uh and this has been my commitment to making sure that the balance, a work-life balance, to make sure that the people that I'm working with. And they're working for me uh are are aware of what the goals and objectives are, and that they don't burn themselves out in the process. And more importantly, as a manager, I've focused on investing in the development of of my staff. I'm pouring into my staff, and I think if you rate any manager that's out there, you should rate them based on. The number of employees that have worked for them that have gone on to become managers themselves. And I'm happy to report that that's one of the aspects of the success that I've had, because I've always focused on ways that I can. And pour into develop and enhance the careers, uh the long-term careers of the people that I work with and that work for me.
Thank you, Commissioner Castle. Do you have additional questions? Mr. Bill?
Yes.
What is the key to a successful budget? And what is the most challenging part to budgeting for you?
So the the key to successful budget overall is making sure that you are addressing the wants, needs, and concerns of the commission. As well as the community. Uh I believe the, the reason why uh the council manager former government was created. And I s- I sit on the ICMA as a a credential manager. One of the committees on the national level that I sit on. Uh is the Graduate Education uh Committee. Um one of the other uh committees that I sit on, on the state level, is a committee that's dedicated to. The propagation of the council manager former government. So understanding what that means and what that's all about. Is a critical aspect of of the work that I do. Um the council manager former government suggests that a commission should identify the objectives of the organization, the goals. Uh to set the policies, and it's the responsibility of the manager to execute on those goals and objectives. So when it comes to a budget, a budget should be reflective of the best possible way to meet the goals and objectives. That the, the commission has created. And so uh uh that is the, the, the first element of the success of a budget. To make sure that it provides for the mechanisms to meet those goals and objectives. Now, in order to do that, you have to have goals and objectives. And so I found in the organizations that I work on, it's very critical to be able to. Have that goal-setting uh um process in place. But once you have a a budget, you need to make sure that that budget is aligned with all the other plans that you have. The comprehensive plan, the capital improvement, improvement plan, the five-year recreational plan. any suretts or visioning plans that you have, like uh, uh, for instance, here, the downtown uh, development plan. That all has to be aligned with the budget to make sure that the, that uh, the budget is um, going to be able to achieve the ultimate objectives or has the best possibility to achieve those objectives. Um, so whether that is uh, historical preservation or not should be reflected in the budget process. Uh, if you don't align those things, then you have uh, documents that potentially can sit on a shelf and are not living documents. Uh, I've had a lot, a great deal of success with budgets in, in my past. When I was at the South Florida Water Management District, I dealt with a one point zero three billion dollar budget. It was my responsibility to put together that budget. Um, one of the things that we did was what people are now referring to as prior, priority-based budgeting. And so we put out a survey, um, and working in conjunction with the council and the commission to say to the community, these are what the commission of, of priorities and objectives are. What do you feel of these, of this list of uh, objectives is your priority as a community? And that uh, provides information and feedback to the commission so that when we put together the budget, that we're taking into consideration the priorities that the community has spoken about and the priorities that the commission has spoken about. And that should be reflected in your budget. And to me, that's a, a successful budget. Now, obviously you have to make sure that revenues and expenditures are balanced. You need to make sure that you have a fund balance. Uh, and I, I was happy to see that you have a significant fund balance there in Palaca, which is excellent. Um, some communities like the one that I'm leaving have a zero fund balance and some like the city of Beverly Hills in California had a fifty percent fund balance. So finding that right mix is important. You don't want to have a fifty percent fund balance and not be able to provide the services that the community is seeking, that the commission is seeking, because what is that money sitting there doing if it's not being utilized and active? You want to make sure that you have enough money to be able to operate for three to six months if everything goes flat like we experienced in the coronavirus. Uh, but if that's not the case, then you know, that three to six period, anything more than that should probably be focused on achieving organizational objectives. And to me, that should be reflected in the budget. And let me just say, I apologize if it looks like I'm looking down uh, on these responses. Um, the virtual environment is not the best environment for me. What I will say is as a manager, my face-to-face interaction is always much more effective to me than uh, these virtual environments. So if I, if I'm looking down, please accept my apologies for that. Uh, as opposed to looking directly into wherever that camera might be.
Thank you, Commissioner Moore.
Can you hear me now, sir?
I think so.
Okay, I know you're frozen. Um. In your um, experiences as a city manager or otherwise, what processes do you have or you have implemented in place that will ensure of course, these services are, are being provided and that there's um, making sure that how, how would you ensure that core city services are provided?
Okay, very good questions. So um, and, and anytime that I uh, come into an organizational leadership capacity, what I have attempted to do and, and it's, it, it all depends on the organization because you don't want to duplicate something that would, that has just been undertaken. But I like to start with a strategic planning process to make sure that we're aligning uh, the strat plan, the economic development. Plans are aligned with the budget. But what I've found um, uh, from the strategic plan is it gives me an opportunity to interact with staff, get a sense of, you know, wh- what level of uh, interaction the staff has, um, how committed they are to their roles, uh, how well they know their roles. So the strat planning process incorporates a SWOT analysis. So we look at our strengths, weaknesses, our opportunities and our threats. And I think that's important to assessing any organization, but my I'm some very main or specific items. We need to make sure that the organization i- it has the resources to operate. You know, that in some minds might be maintenance or management that it can, the tr- the trains will run on time. Uh, so, so on and so on and so forth. The next aspect would be what are the critical issues? Those are the issues that threaten whether or not uh, the trains run on time. And so be my responsibility coming into the organization to help identify that in conjunction with the commission. Now, wh- what are the, the threats to us being able to, to uh, provide the basic services that we're required to pro- provide? And then the third thing would be that uh, what are the areas for improvement or opportunities for change uh, to be able to make what we're doing? Uh, how can we improve that? How can we make it more effective and more efficient? And that's the change management area. So uh, those are the areas that I focus on. Within that, you know, we have to look at what are the processes and procedures? Are there SOPs in place? Are there handbooks in place? Uh, how, how do we interact with associations or unions? How that affects uh, those types of things? Uh, but we need to make sure that we have an orderly and organized uh, uh, city organization. And so as a former project manager, uh, sometimes I lean heavy into strat planning uh, as a mechanical engineer that I like to be able to see visually this uh, beginning, the end of a, of a project. Um, so those are aspects of, of my leadership style that I bring to bear. Um, and I think that's, you know, what, what you're asking about in terms of process and procedure. Did I miss any aspect of, of your question? Because it was a little bit difficult to hear you.
Well, yeah, you explained that very well, but just, just an example would be if uh, there were any gaps as relates to the services that this team may provide and uh, the community that we serve, an example, if there are, example, trash not being picked up or if there is a permitting, um, things that, you know, we can remove uh, to make it more efficient. Those type of things. So the services that we provide and if there is any gaps that the community might see, hey, they're supposed to be providing these services. Are they really doing it to the level that they need? So that's what I was trying to say, any process.
Sure. And I can give you an example of, of, of one of those uh, options. Uh, economic development was a very important aspect of the community that I was at. It's a very important aspect of the communities that I've served at before. If we want to spur economic development, if we want to lower the barriers to entry, we should be expediting economic development. And so that, that means the permitting process needs to be as streamlined and, and as uh, um, simple as pro- possible, for lack of a better term. Um, what I have found in, in leveraging technology, some communities uh, have a manual process. Uh, it, the investment that it takes in order to, to digitize that process is limited and it streamlines tremendously the permitting process. There are some permits that don't require a person to touch it. And those permits should be able to be uh, streamlined. People should be able to pay for them online. And the community often has identified, you know, this is a difficulty. We want to develop. We want to work, but we are held up because the permitting process is such a slow process. And anybody who has worked in business uh, before understands that the, the time to market is a critical aspect of being successful. And if you've got money that is uh, at risk, you want to make sure that that money is put into work as quickly as possible. So if you're talking about a twenty-one to forty-five day permitting process, that will stop a lot of investment in uh, uh, economic development in your community. Uh, I have in the past uh, streamlined that process by bringing in a digital uh, pro- uh, process by leveraging uh, technology and software in order to do that. That's an area where there was a grab, uh, gap that was identified by the community that we were able to address. Um, uh, by making a change in the way that we did business.
Thank you. Any other questions? Um, he just lost service. I'm sorry, Mr. Bill has lost signal.
I don't know if that was my system or your system. I think I got.
Commissioner Campbell, do you have any additional questions?
Uh, yes, I have one additional question. Motivation isn't um, a one-size-fits-all solution. What are your thoughts or what are some ways that you uh, would consider building the morale of the employees of the city of Palaca?
So I, I, I think transparency is a huge aspect of that. Um, several times, uh, oftentimes uh, employees are, are demoralized because they don't know what's going on. Uh, so transparency is important, but if you're going to establish transparency, you also need to have clarity in the responsibilities, roles and roles of employees. Um, we ask employees to come in and fill a job, but sometimes they're not clear on what that job really entails. So we have to look at the job descriptions and make sure that, that each of our employees understands what's being asked of them and that it's clearly aligned with the ultimate goals and objectives of the organization. A, a gentleman by the name of uh, James Q. Wilson uh, is an individual that I have uh, modeled my career after. He wrote several books, but one of them was about bureaucracy and how he looked at um, how uh, federal organizations, schools, uh, um, state organizations operated to find out what uh, were the areas that made them most successful. And what he came to conclusion was that you have to have a critical activity in your organization. Um, and when I say critical activity, everybody needs to know when they come to work that this is the objective that they are fulfilling and coming to work as a critical activity. And there needs to be consensus across the organization and how to achieve that critical activity. If you have those two things, you have culture and culture is the basis of morale. And then the final thing that he said is you have to have the resources and be able to do your job. It doesn't uh, have any value if you have a critical activity, you know how to achieve that critical activity, but you don't have the resources to be able to do that. You put those three things together and that's how you incentivize and, uh, and encourage morale. Now beyond that, the next thing that you have to look at is making sure that when people do the work that you're asking them to do, when they actually achieve that critical activity that you identify it, that you recognize it and that you uh, that you uh, award that activity. Um, and that's something that is missing from a number of organizations. But it also helps to encourage and create uh, better morale. Um, and, and I'll say the final aspect that I've been successful on and, and um, I have recommendation letters from my existing staff because we went from a, a, an environment where there was no morale to creating a collaborative spirit among the leadership team and those people that were on their staffs was because they were participatory in the dis- the, the decision-making process. They are partners in the decision-making process. And that doesn't mean, and they understood this as we got together, that we're always going to agree on things. Uh, we would get into rooms and we would have uh, debates. Um, but what was important to me is that the employees felt uh, as part of the leadership team, that they had an opportunity to voice, to, to be heard. Because the last thing I want to do is make a decision and go in a certain direction and hear a week later, well, I didn't agree with that. And that comes from somebody who didn't say anything. So we get in a room, we hash it out, but when we come out of that room as a leadership team, we are all on the same page. Now, that is valuable because I believe that is how we have been able, because everybody participates in the process, whether we agree or not. They have great morale. Uh, we have great morale. Um, and so one other aspect of that too is a change management group. So when we look at all these plans that we put together in order to make sure that those plans are living documents that they don't sit on a shelf and gathered dust, is to make sure that we're constantly visiting those plans to see if they are still representative of the desires of the commission, of the desires of the community. And so our change management group is a group of employees. We alternate every month who chairs that, that committee. And they look at um, our plans, the strat plan, the comprehensive plan, uh, the CIP to make sure that we are online. And if they have recommendations that changes need to pu- uh, to, to happen, they uh, make those recommendations about ordinances that need to be amended or adjusted. Uh, they are part of the decision-making process. That recommendation comes back to the leadership team. We share that with, with council and commissioners and then move forward with whatever the decisions are. Their participation in that is a huge boost to morale in the organization.
Thank you. Okay, but save your time. Commissioner Jones has one more question. If anybody else has any further questions? Um, Commissioner Kell?
Oh, I'm fine. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Jones, I have one last question.
Well, I found a question, Mr. Bill. You seem to be a communicator. My question is, what's your method of communication, of communicating with your one direct reports? Secondly, staff and thirdly, the commu- uh, commission? What is your preferred method of communicating?
Sure. So um, I, I would always want, when I come into a community in a leadership capacity, to look, to listen, to learn, to hear what, what the community has to say. I think one of the benefits of, of my leadership style and the diversity of my background is that I can be the leader that uh, provides the type of leadership that is necessary for the organization. And you, you never want to have a, a one-trick pony as a, a leader in your organization. You want to have somebody that can pivot and grow with the organization. And I think that I can provide that leadership style that today addresses what the needs of the organization are today. But in three years, those needs will probably be different. They will have evolved and changed. And you want a manager that can evolve and grow with the organization as required. And I think that I'm in a position to be able to provide, you know, that difference in uh, the way that organizations operate. And I want to make sure that I address every aspect of your question. So if you could repeat that real quick because you cut out in some parts.
What is your preferred method of communicating?
Okay. With the staff. Okay. And so, I'm sorry. Um, we, we, as a staff meet on a weekly basis, we have a staff meeting that allows for us to communicate. Um, that staff meeting is primarily focused on the collaboration of the leadership team. Um, so if there are issues that intersect between one department and another department, this is an opportunity to identify it. Um, and if there's time there that they can address it or they can take it offline and address it. So that communication is important. We also use a software called Basecamp, which is, which is a project management software where we list and identify all the projects that uh, that are underway or issues that we have as an organization and we can keep tallies on how uh, those issues are addressed across the organization. So that is a communication mechanism. The staff meeting, uh, the weekly staff meeting is a communication mechanism. The um, the change management group is also a, a aspect of communication that makes sure that we're always on the same page. Uh, and if we ever uh, get out of alignment, then these meetings, these uh, assets allow us to be able to right-size ourselves. As far as the rest of the organization is concerned, on, on a monthly basis, I meet with the public works department to be able to field whatever uh, issues that they might have. Um, and they have an opportunity to, to bring those directly to, to me. And oftentimes I rely upon the public works director to, to give me advanced knowledge of some of the issues that might come to bear. I believe uh, um, and this part of what I work, uh, that I write about is that the public works department can be the uh, um, the representation of the community because they're out there in the community. And they should be representative of what we want to, to appear as an organization. The same thing with the police department, the fire department, those are areas. But on a quarterly basis, uh, we have all hands staff meeting. On a quarterly basis, we have an opportunity to come together and make sure that the message is clear to all of the staff. And if there's any questions or concerns about messaging, those are corrected at that point in time. So we, we make sure we have transparency and communication throughout the. So we we make sure we have transparency and communication throughout the entire staff. And as far as the communication with the council and the commission is. On a regularly regular basis, in my current capacity, I met with the mayor. And so to make sure that the mayor was informed. We used timely and orderly reports to make sure that that information was shared across council. And the former positions that I had as well. It was very, very important to make sure that we filed reports in a orderly and timely manner. And oftentimes, we would get reports and I would get reports in early. To make sure that that information was there and logged. But also making sure that we communicate to every council member, every commission member. That information that is shared across the organization. So that they're aware of what the organization is doing, they're aware of what the leadership team is doing. And they're aware of the issues that might come across their desk in terms of legislative responsibilities.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bell.
Thank you, Mr. Bell. I just have one clarifying question. Did you complete your PhD studies? Are you now a doctor?
No, it is currently on hold. I have completed all the coursework, which was the face to face requirement. And now I'm moving into the dissertation stage of the process. But because of this transition, everything has been put on hold until this transition occurs. Because I want to make sure that the work that I do towards the doctorate. And this is something that my mother asked me before she passed away to make sure that I completed my studies. That I started and completed those studies, so I'm committed to doing that. But at the same time, I want to make sure that I provide the time and commitment to whatever organization I'm serving. To be the best possible manager that I can be. And then at that point in time, revisit the progress of my dissertation. I have a six year period in order to complete that. Hopefully, it won't take that long, but that's why it's on hold for now.
Okay, thank you. I am going to turn this over now to City Manager Holmes.
Good morning, Mr. Bell.
Good morning, sir.
I will be asking and advising you the same the same information that I intend to ask and advise every candidate at the commission of interviews. You filed a employment application that I think was online and it contains an electronic signature. So I want to confirm something that's in that and then ask a couple of follow up questions to make sure we have clarity. In the electronically submitted application, the last page. I'm sorry, I'm getting a little feedback. I hope you aren't, but in that last page, I'll read the following couple sentences. It states under the heading disclaimer and signature. I understand that the company may, as part of the hiring process, request an investigative consumer report. From a third party entity or agency, including information concerning my character, general reputation, personal characteristics. Credit records and mode of living. I may make a written request to the company to provide me with additional information regarding the nature and scope of any such report. Do you recall seeing that in the in the application?
I do.
And this does have electronically submitted signature. So would you confirm for us that you did sign that that application, including that particular clause?
Yes, I did.
So will you now affirm your consent to the city performing a detailed background check of you, sir?
Yeah.
And if you wish to avail yourself of that sentence, which says I may make a written request to the company to provide me with an additional with additional information regarding. The nature and scope of any such report, would you submit that by email or writing, whichever you prefer, to Ms. Jones? And she'll confer with Ms. Thomas regarding that the city attorney?
Absolutely.
In the course of that, I I know that you're going to be asked to provide your full name. I know on the application, it simply mentions your name as Troy Bell, but I assume you make your name, your legal name may be differed. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So if you if you would be willing to provide your full name and the identifying information that they will need to conduct their background search.
Okay.
And then. And that will also include contact with previous employer employers. All right, sir? Okay, so if then I would not ask you to provide any identifying information. In this context, I'll let Ms. Jones through the HR department do that with you to preserve your privacy. And then, you know, then we'll we'll move forward on that basis. And as I said, commission, it's my intent to go through this same process with every person that you interview. For obvious reasons, important decision, you're going through a long process to make the right choice. And just want to make sure that we have as much information provided you as we possibly can, okay?
Okay. Very well.
Thank you. Do you have any questions, Commissioner? I do not. Attorney Thomas, any questions? Or Mr. Bell?
Yes. No, Madam Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, when that's said, Mr. Bell, I think we are all set with this interview. Wait, did you say you have any questions, Mr. Bell, again?
Sure, I was curious to know what this process would look like. I know that I've been given some preliminary information about about how the process would would occur. So that was one of the things that I had a question about moving forward. And then a closing statement.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Holmes or Ms. Jones, do you want to answer Mr. Bell's question regarding the process?
With with the caveat that I've got the city attorney and an HR person listening. Our contemplated process would be that you would complete the interviews that you're going to be conducting by virtual means tomorrow. At the end of that time. And after I've asked everyone the same questions that I asked Mr. Bell, we will try to expedite the background checks on all of the individuals whom. You interviewed. And then once that's completed, it would be my. Thought that you would be advising us of what you're of which candidates you would wish to interview in person. And then we would would set that up and try to get those in person interviews scheduled. In the event the background check reveal anything that we have questions about, I would suggest that we would contact the applicant. Directly offline to provide them the information that we have received and that we have questions about and offer them an opportunity to explain. And then move forward from there.
Thank you. Now, what's your additional question, Mr. Bell? I'm sorry, besides, do you have?
No, I was just going to to comment that I had not touched on my awareness of the. The work that you're doing with the infrastructure and the importance of revitalizing the the pipes that you had. And then the last aspect of my ability to bring some fresh eyes to. The existing situations that you have there and be able to provide you with some innovation and creativity and how to address that. I I think my the aspect of my role, having been a registered lobbyist in the state of Florida. And being able to work intergovernmentally across the organization would help with developing relationships on all level. Whether it's the state, the county or the local level. And so that's the only other aspects that I wanted to make sure we covered before we ended the interview.
Thank you. With that said, I think you thank you for your time and your responses. We really appreciate it.
I'm very excited to be part of the process, so thank you very much.
And we'll try to expedite this process as quickly as we can. Thank you so much, Commissioner.
Have a great day.
Thank you very much. We've got two scheduled for tomorrow. I think we only have two remaining candidates who are still in the who still have.
Um, may I? Mr. Bell, this time I'm going to remove you from the meeting.
Okay, I will. Exit. Thank you.
And we have two remaining interviews, two remaining candidates who continue to express interest in the job. Those are scheduled for tomorrow. We will follow the process that I advised Mr. Bell that we would be following. And. And hope to move forward quickly. Thank you.
With that said, we have a couple of comments. We just got to make some, we have a few questions for them tomorrow.
Right, we're ready to go.
I got you.
Yeah, tomorrow and this ten days because we're going from eight thirty and stop at nine thirty with the fifteens. And my first interview took an hour and thirty four. We will have that time, so it's gonna have to be, you got one hour. Over this one, we could just keep.
Well, we can't push back the, can we push back the second interview if they're still involved in the in the interview? We can we push back the second interview if they're still involved in the first?
You got to take the same amount of time. I mean, we got the same questions. Whatever time it take, we got to give it the same due process.
Unless we eliminate the recesses, that wasn't, isn't there a recess between the two?
Please, let's stop a minute. Sunny, what is the second? When is the second?
He just had a lot to say.
I can listen.
When is the second interview scheduled?
Yes, sir. The second interview, the one that starts at eight thirty, from eight thirty to nine thirty. And then the second one following that is nine forty five to ten forty five.
Question is, we're virtual. Isn't it possible if commission is still engaged in the interview for us to advise the third candidate then? Since you're saying the second one starts at eight thirty, that we need a little bit more time and leave them in the waiting room or have them call back at a time?
Yeah, I can always match them.
So I think that's a simple solution. Simple solutions, we make sure that we give everybody the same amount of time.
I don't think it's gonna go as long. He actually. Yeah, so I don't think none of them are gonna have that. I don't think.
There's one second, one workshop based upon today. So, so, okay, um, on data. Okay, and we have a motion to adjourn.
Yeah, I may be wrong, dude. I've been those good parties and it flowed pretty good.